Not yet. Hopefully, I think maybe this week I'll hear something like, within that. Yeah. That will be out there. I really want to solve this.
I have a huge system. They're still getting sound.
Big events. And we, of course, I didn't want it.
We were trying to figure out what's going on.
Now, we do the Warren Woods program.
That's a big event.
I'm very humanistic. It's like, it's just way ahead of that.
Oh, yeah. So. Thank you. I'm sorry.
That's enough.
That's an extra.
Hey, Pop.
So, I agree. Definitely. So, we're just gonna get here after the show? Okay. If you should be wanting to draw. Do something. Really, just about. Yeah.
How's that, what you got? What are you going on now? So, I'm like, that's what I'm checking. So, like, that's what I'm checking.
Now, nothing else.
Actually, you know, over.
Out of that, she's about to see you. No, I'm totally kidding. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, great.
He does nice.
Yeah. I don't have quite the necessary problems.
Right, so here.
Well, or it must be fifteen times an hour.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Thank you. Probably not gonna happen, yes. I can't have any. That's what you were saying. I'm sure he has, the things he brought up with data.
Okay, here, you're already at the.
Okay.
Just.
Yeah, that will have to come down to somebody. Yeah, I mean, honestly, you'll never get the, the, you'll away from, you know.
For you to break it all.
Good.
No, I thought, um, yeah. I don't know. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that, I think, is helping. So, I didn't hear what I was, I guess they were, he said, so they're also ready. We're gonna need first.
Something in my jacket.
Yeah, I think. There's a foot, I mean, where, I was checking the door. Oh, yeah. Yeah.
It's off. Here. Right. So. That was all for the, back when I was, um, on the, you know.
I turned it on, I turned it on.
There's something.
I can't.
No, no, you can't.
No. Correct. That one, the, 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 the smaller. Remember, you brought it out.
Isn't that possible?
Well, sure, I remember the bottom of the water. I see. No, I can't. Yeah. I'm inside. So. Good luck.
Yeah, last year, have a liner ready down.
So. No. Nope. Audience. Okay. Here's the organs. You happy with the body already? Let's get it. So, you're right about that. Okay. Let's take your bag. So, I'm just, I'm not having additions for this big now. So, every second. So, that, that's the way you tell you.
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of the Martinsville Board of Works and Safety. Meeting is hereby called to order. Mr. Mayor, would you please call the hall?
Mayor Costin.
President.
John Lillywhite.
President.
Kelly Bray.
President.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you received copies of the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
No.
No, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
I would second that motion.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented for the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion carries. Under unfinished business, we ask to bring back tonight the request from the May twenty-seventh meeting of Artisan Little League to repurpose the shelter house that was tabled from the last meeting. Uh, was asked for a representative to be here. So, Chris, if you want to come forward, uh, whomever, state your name and address, and then.
Yeah, my name's John Lopasa, um, with the Artisan Little League at four twenty-five West Douglas. And, uh, yeah, like you said, we're looking to repurpose the shelter house that's on the, I think it's four thirty-five West Cunningham address on that side that we currently lease, you know, every year. And, uh, looking to basically wrap it with barn metal, basically install three garage doors for additional storage for really larger equipment to manage the fields. The, uh, the number of kids have went up from between four to five hundred up to seven hundred, and actually, just officially today, our footprint with Little League International has expanded by seventy percent, uh, as well. So, we'll be getting a lot more kids, you know, coming in from, um, even at Mooresville, all the way down past all of the winery, um, and all the way over to Morgantown. So, definitely much larger footprint with a lot more boys and girls coming in, so.
Are there any questions?
Is this the shelter house behind Lester Field?
Yes.
What do you, tell me what you mean by the footprint?
So, is, when anybody wants to, you know, play baseball or softball, they go to Little League International, and they put in their address, and it tells them who their home, um, facility is. And so, basically, now, um, basically, we're gonna get sixty percent more of the footprint as far as addresses that for people that are looking to play.
Does Mooresville not have a little league anymore?
So, Mooresville has a, a recreational baseball softball, but it's not considered Little League as like you would see on ESPN with like Little League World Series, uh, that's not affiliated. So, they have a baseball softball program, but for those that are wanting to, you know, try out for that, that, you know, the opportunity to play in that type of facility, um, us, uh, here in Martinsville, Decatur, Greenwood, Franklin, and then I think Wilmington might be, uh, adding one as well, so.
So, how, how many teams? I mean, I know you've got your spring league. How, how many is this going to be in conjunction with that time period? Is this gonna be something that's gonna be more in the summertime?
As far as the.
The time for the Little League, that your footprint that you've grown.
So, the, the part that we've grown, I mean, it'll be grown for both the spring and the, and the fall, basically. So, it's gonna continue to grow, you know, from there, just like I said, over the last three years, we went from three to five up to seven or plus, uh, just in the spring season. So, it'll continue to grow, um, you know, and of course, as like I said, with the footprint and grow from there. Um, but as we've now expanded out, and the number of kids and whatnot, being able to have larger equipment to manage the facilities and have a place, you know, for that equipment, um, you know, with a larger barn in addition to, um, you know, more pallets of field dry, field conditioner, and, as well as the, the field chalk, uh, as well.
Thank you. You've been very thorough. Can you tell me, um, so there's not, there's not more? So, my confusion lies in the fact that I know you have a couple of, um, shelters already for storage, um, as well as the concession stand, storage on the other side on Douglas Street. Um, you're not adding any fields, so I'm confused about why you need more storage, I guess.
So, as far as like the, right now, we have two mowers, um, and then we have, uh, one machine that, that drags, you know, the fields. Um, you know, looking into having storage for the pallets of, of the chalk, the field dry, and the field conditioner. Right now, we can just barely have a house, one pallet of each, and with, in the last week, we used an entire pallet of field dry. Um, and so, being able to have more, and that was for two days worth of, of games because of the rain. So, being able to house more than one pallet or something like that because of, you know, granted, it's been a very wet spring.
It has been.
Um, but it took, from the time we ordered that, it took, what, almost a month to receive that? So, having that additional, um, ability to house that, as well as, I know we've looked at some type of tractor as well to help, you know, manage those fields and everything.
Where we hold the field chalk and conditioner right now is actually the old shell, uh, concession stand on the Cunningham side. Well, now that we play on every single field, we're wanting to reopen that concession stand. So, we have a concession stand on both sides, so people don't have to walk to this down run. Well, by doing that, I'm gonna lose my, that's where I keep my field dry and conditioner right now, isn't that a shelter house? Well, when she opens that as a concession stand again, I'm gonna lose that, and I'm not gonna have anywhere to put it. So, that's, was the idea behind it, was to open that other concession stand that would back up the business. So, then we can use that as concessions instead of storage.
Is there a reason you want to use the shelter? I just know that when my boys played there, we used the shelter as a team to get out of the hot sun before a game or after a game, and, I mean, it.
I know families picnic there, too, and, you know, it's not, not stuff going on. Um, yeah, I, I wonder, I'm actually not opposed to having a structure. I don't love the idea of taking away the shelter. Uh, is there, aside from the cost of a roof and, uh, ten four-by-fours? Is there a reason why you don't want to just put in a small hole barn or something like that?
We were just trying to, well, they're not used.
Excuse what's there?
Because, I mean, I don't know how often you guys are there, but the parking is pretty scarce without having to get. I mean, there's a lot of people that go through there every, every Saturday, and sometimes it's tough to even find a parking spot. So, we park in the grass, you know, in between the fields there, that open field. We park, they park, I didn't know they could park.
Sure, sure.
And we were just afraid if we tried to build another structure, we're gonna take away the parking, right? And in the years that I've been there, which is my tenth year down there, uh, that's, not, not a whole lot of people have used that shelter for anything now, because there's not even picnic tables, because the homeless people, uh, pour them up, they call them fire, and they start fires under it, and they start fires in the dugouts, and so we're trying, we were just thought, well, since nobody really utilizes a shelter house right now, not saying they haven't in the past, we could just utilize it as a building to hold the field dry conditioner, because it takes about four, four pallets a year of conditioner, maybe five, and usually about two to three field dry, depending on how wet it's been. This year, we've got, I have to keep coming over and ordering it because I don't have a place to store it. So, now I'm down two weeks playing on a mechanic, because I just don't have any work for it. Not enough of the reading.
You know, I had, you know, grew with Calvin, I know, we spent a lot of time in that shelter house, too. And looking at their, their drawing, we have two wall houses that, uh, I know the ground's not the most level between those two, but maybe a new structure could be put in there and not interfere so much with the parking.
So, I wonder if, uh, the city would be willing to send somebody down there to take a swipe out and level it up a little bit?
We probably, probably could.
Worth talking about.
But I don't know where, how deep the pipes are through there. That'd be the one thing we'd have to figure out. Mac, between the two wall houses, are there, is there piping going between?
I believe that there is, but I have to check on it. And find out how deep, you know.
Yeah, I know the people that we talked to expressed, um, concern, because they wanted to keep the shelter house.
Okay.
And, and I think that's valid. Um, if there is a solution where we can, you know, cut the baby in half, I love cutting babies in half, and we can find a way to get you guys some dry storage and also keep people dry in a rainstorm, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of that. But, by the way, congratulations, I think this is great that you're expanding, and, uh, more kids are gonna be, you know, able to play some ball. I think that's wonderful.
You probably didn't even consider getting a price on one of these pole barns this size with a brand?
Twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Twenty thousand.
Twenty.
Twenty thousand? Hello. And that's because of.
Suggesting anything they put in the ground out there, they should have a utility hook it, that's all.
And that's because of, what, I mean, obviously, the materials for that, um, it's not a twenty thousand dollar material cost for.
No, it would be light material. This here is, we were gonna do most of this, like, because this is, the structures are already there, all of them are on the track.
Kenny, if you want us to look at a couple of areas out there, we can do it fairly quickly and get an answer back to you in time for your next meeting. Probably should have done that ahead of time, like, that I can.
No, no, same. Same token, if we're looking at the five thousand dollar cost here to wrap this building, and we come back and we tell them, no, we want you to put up a new building that's twenty thousand dollars, where they would come up with fifteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Mayor.
We got a couch downstairs, we can start checking the cushions or.
Yeah.
Or the fridge.
So, are the other, are the other storage sheds, I mean, this is the year that you would have need, you would have needed the dry?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. This is by far the wettest spring that, since we've been on the board for the last six years. Um, but, uh, yeah, the other, all the other sheds are full of equipment.
Of things that are being used, I guess, that's my question. Has someone gone through and thrown things out? Do I need to go over and help?
Yeah, we've gone through and thrown things out, and, and we actually, we took our entire equipment room, um, downstairs and moved it upstairs, and then converted all that for dry storage for the concession, um, that's underneath, um, like, behind the.
Concession now, yeah.
Increasing the, increasing concessions, yeah.
Sure. Which is why you want to open the other concession.
Right, exactly.
Could we, you know, I hate putting you off, putting you off, but I'd really like maybe table this to the next meeting again. Can we do that, Mr. Porter? Table, table a table item? Uh, just so we can go and kind of look, now we've got an idea of what your footprint for a building's gonna be, and it is, it is the city's property.
Right.
So, let's do some thinking on that, so.
The other thing, Kenny, we could do real quickly is look at the boxes that we have. I believe most of them are being used up at the street department, uh, that we got from the military. But if we happen to have an extra one, that would be a temporary solution.
When you say a box, do you mean like a shipping container?
Yeah, it's, what do you call those?
Shipping container.
Well.
Truck box.
The thing, that's what.
Yeah.
And we, we may be able to store some of the, the street department area. Frank's back there, he's. So, I, I would entertain a motion possibly to table this to the next meeting, so we can maybe do some.
Can I ask one more quick question? Were either of you on the board when the, so when the sheds were, um, when the storage sheds were purchased?
Yes, both of them.
Both of them?
I was there with both of them. The ones that are there now?
Yes.
Yes, I was there with both of them.
And so, did those run twenty thousand dollars?
Big one down by the chrome field was seventy-eight hundred dollars roughly, and the little bit smaller one was about sixty-eight hundred dollars for the actual storage sheds.
You're talking about that small one over on the east side?
Yeah, there between Myers and.
Yeah, and it's, it's not in the best shape?
Well, we just replaced it, so.
Okay.
And actually, it was about, it was about sixty-eight, it was a little cheaper, because it's about four foot shorter.
And the one by Chrome, does it hold both mowing devices?
It does. It holds both the mowers, and then what we do is, since you've got chrome and spinner right down there, we use, we put a pile of chalk in it and some chalkers, so that they don't have to walk all the way from the other end.
Yeah.
And then it's got all the tools to, like, if it rains real hard, we can work the field without having to drag tools from one side to the other. So, there's field equipment there. Then the one on the, uh, the little one that we were just talking about, L's all our extra bases or drags, like our flat drags, it holds, uh.
And that also holds all the, uh, the mounts.
So, is there, is there a place to hide another storage shed over on the other side for Merritt and Lester? I mean, it sounds like the size is not the problem, it's just the extra, I mean, if you're gonna open that concession stand, and that's where you're storing that dry, it, just look at the property, yeah. I, I'll make a motion, we table this.
I'll second that motion.
Been a motion made, seconded to table this item until next meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, and I'll get back. You guys, Mac and I can meet you.
Okay, so.
Got an extra one, though?
Yeah.
We haven't seen that.
Is there anything else that you need from us? Hang in.
Not right now, I may reach out, and Mac and I go up there and see if I'm, you, or available to meet us or something.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda tonight is the consideration of the City of Martinsville Personnel Policy Handbook, Mr. Mayor.
I will defer to Mrs. Simpson.
Good evening, um, so we have before you a revised employee handbook that was prepared by Creed Devault, um, to basically bring all the, um, policies up to date with the current federal and state laws and the languages. There is a significant change to the employee PTO policy that will take it from the bucket system of sick vacation personnel to basically just making all that time available to the employee to use, you know, for whatever reason that they would have. So, um, those are basically the changes, you know, a few tweaks here and there, but those are the big ones.
So, it looked like mostly just changing the dates, updating the term.
Correct.
Okay. Kelly, I didn't see anything else in there that made me scratch my head.
No, me neither.
Well, but I'll make a motion that we approve the changes and updates to the City of Martinsville Personnel Policy Handbook.
And I'll second it.
Been a motion made, and seconded to pass the motion on the updating the personnel handbook. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion carries. Thank you, Brandon. Serial adjustments tonight, seven eighty-nine North Mulberry Street, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty-one cents, three ninety West Douglas Street, three hundred and seven dollars and forty cents, five thirty-five Eric Court, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty cents, forty-seven Meredith Place, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-three cents, sixteen twenty-one Josephine Street, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents, and sixteen thirty Plantation Drive, hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-three cents. You receive information on these in your packets. Are there any questions or comments?
No, there's a couple on here that had, this is their second one this year, but both of them look like they tried to fix a problem that they'd tried to fix before, so.
Correct, they tried to fix it themselves, and it didn't hold.
Yeah. You know what, you can't fault them for trying to save a hundred bucks, I guess. Um, no, I don't have any issues, I'd motion that we approve them as presented.
And I'll second it.
Been a motion made, and seconded to approve the serial adjustments as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries. Next regular meeting of the Board of Works and Safety will be on Monday, June twenty-third, six thirty, here in council chambers. We are adjourned.
Now, just to.
Is it the one that, with those water? Now, have you seen the whole? It may be, so it's got some protrusion, but it's not like the structure.
It's not.
A, it's like. Yes.
Well, in places like this, great time, ocean, I think, extra large. Do you like them?
What is going to be?
I have lost some power.
Why not? Yeah.
Comments boxes.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I got a great place for you if you need to go down there.
No, I mean, listen, I don't want to go get...
You mean from the government.
Would you go?
Yeah, good luck here. We got five on the secondary market right now because everybody's looking too much. We lost out, we had eight of them, literally happened. They were ours. Nope, sorry for your loss. They were... Uh, we can get twenty of them off the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. It was point two hundred dollars, forty footer, but... Well, and the thing of that, I don't know, it's a problem, it's going to be really heavy. And my wife would test it.
But right hand, but middleweight, we don't have...
You know, do anything, you believe it on the ground. And then, and then it's something, you know, if you did the twenty footer, that's what I said, twenty footer. Twenty footer, twenty footer. I just want to run it in. The twenty footer, now, you know, say it walks very hard, and he's like, really pedal it. These things, they, they got a bit of that, you know. Maybe a hundred of... How much was it for free for the twenty footer? From Indy to here, a couple hundred bucks? No, 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 Indy. I would say, really, it's very cheap. But here's the thing, if we have to clap that and they have one pickup truck up there, pick truck up there and throw three stops home and you're done. You bring it home because our equipment, all I know, can be...
Very important with you.
What do you know? What do you know?
Well, that's good.
We're going to try to get it to only go there. And you can say what you want, Danny.
Yeah. Hey, I just, I just...
Good evening and welcome to the Monday, June ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting of Martinsville Common Council. Meeting is hereby called the order. At this time, I would like to invite Pastor Jackson Avenue of Life and Love Ministries to come forward to make some caveats, so if you would please stand and remain standing for our pleasure.
Yeah, Father, we come to you tonight, we just thank you, we glorify you, we thank you, Lord, for this great city that we live in, in Martinsville, Indiana. Father, we thank you for these powerful leaders that are making decisions that are changing our city for the better. We ask that your hand would be on every decision that's made tonight, Lord. And God, your hand would be in their life, the blessings of heaven would be upon their lives, and we give you all the praise and all the glory and all the honor, and she sustain. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jacey. Mr. Mayor, would you please call roll?
John Badger?
Present.
Susie Lips?
Present.
Ben Mahan? Josh Baron?
Present.
Ann Miller?
Present.
Phil Deckard Senior?
Present.
Phil Deckard the Second?
Present.
Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. Prior to tonight's meeting, you each received minutes of the Monday, Tuesday, of the Tuesday, May twenty-seventh meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes. Seconded?
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
Hyped to join.
One of them's seen. Thank you. One thing I just want to make a comment this evening, beginning with the June twenty-third meeting, and each meet, each second meeting of the month after that, there's three of the councilmen that are on different boards and commissions. We're going to ask for you to give a report of what's happened back here to the council each month, so we can be abreast of what's going on with the Plan Commission, the R D C, and also Morgan County Economic Development. So we'll start that with the meeting on the twenty-third. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything from the clerk's office?
Yes, thank you. Just to give you all an update on where we are at financially, most of this information is on the website, so you can look at there, it's why we don't have handouts. But to give you all an update, so interest for the year up to the end of May, we've accrued three hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and ten cents. That equates to a little over two thousand dollars a day, so we're actually starting to make money on our money. Also, we just finished up our annual audit with the State Board of Accounts. By their definition, they said it was the best audit city Martinsville's ever had, so it went very smoothly, went very quickly. So it was, I wouldn't say an enjoyable experience by all, but it went pretty well. We have also made some additions to the website. So if you go to the ordinance page of the website now, you can actually look on the left-hand side and you can look up ordinances by year, and it will go back to the last twenty years. In addition to searching the ordinance book, you can also do the same for resolutions. So we actually have included resolutions for the past twenty years and minutes for the past twenty years. So all the information's on there. The goal of that is just to make it easier for people to find the information that they're requesting, and that way they can just get it themselves instead of having to wait on us to send it. So that is live, it's up on the website, it's, you can use that. So that is my update for you all. Also, the budget updates are on the website also, so feel free to look at those, but we are trending very well.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Mayor? If not, you were sent copies of the claims for review prior to tonight's meeting. Are there any questions or comments regarding the claims?
I have a couple of questions. The Miller Architects for seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, what was that one, what was that for?
That was for looking at renovation of City Hall or the addition.
Okay. And then the overtime for the street department, two thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-five cents?
It's overtime.
Was there like some kind of, you know, you know, something went on to facilitate overtime that we would...
Would we, this is the times?
Well, I guess whatever this filed on the twenty-eighth of May.
We can probably give you a break then.
Okay. You going to email that, or?
I'll give it to you.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
So is someone to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the claims as submitted.
Second.
Been a motion made and seconded to approve the claims as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Any comments from the council this evening?
I just want to say again, thank you to our maintenance group for collecting all the trash that's picked up every week. It just amazes me, every trash day, how much, what quantities, what types of things are out along the streets, and to think that our city takes care of it as part of our monthly fee, it's just outstanding. So I commend that group, those individuals responsible, and I think I'm lucky to live here in Martinsville and to have that, so thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. Mr. Dan, if you would pass that on to the guys. Are there any comments from the public this evening? If not, the next regular meeting of the Common Council will be on Monday, June twenty-third, seven o'clock, here in the council chambers. No other business, we are adjourned.
If the council would stay till everything is signed, I'd appreciate it.